Hi, welcome to today's episode of Conversations with Karen and Kat. I'm Karen Scott Green.
And I'm Cam Hardrick.
And we are here today with our former Gwinnett County Commission Chairperson, Marlene Foskew. I said Chairperson.
Yeah, I was a district commissioner.
District Commissioner, you know, I'm being prophetic. And Commissioner Foskew made history in 2018 by becoming the first African American to serve on the Gwinnett County Commission. Since that time, she has gone on to serve as Vice President of Economic Development for the Gwinnett Chamber of Commerce. She also serves since 2023 on the Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority Board, and she currently is a CEO, a lady boss of Coalesce Consulting. Thank you and welcome Commissioner. You're gonna always be Commissioner, so that's what we go.
That's right, our forever Commissioner.
I so appreciate that. I always remember working with you ladies and I'm glad to see that y'all have this podcast because it's a wonderful thing to keep communicating with the community.
Absolutely, thank you for that. You know, I'm so glad you're here. You are an extraordinary woman. You are extremely busy. So I want everybody to know, what have you been doing since you've been the Chair?
What have you been doing?
I know, right? Since you have been the Commissioner for Gwinnett, the first black Commissioner for Gwinnett County, correct?
Yes, it was, yes, I was and it was really hard, in all honesty, ladies, that, you know, because I had fought so hard to not only be in that position, but to make positive changes. And then for it to be taken away through redistricting by the legislature, those at the Gold Dome down in December of, well, last year, 2022, it wasn't December, but December of 2022 was my last date of actually working. So it's just like, God, I'm listening to you. What is going on? But what I learned from that experience is that God's no is a yes somewhere else. And so you have to stay open to his redirection. And I had to get there because I was like, I think I hear you. This is what you're telling me to do to help people in Gwinnett, to help all citizens, not just one group of citizens. And so, you know, so I took a, I didn't take a year off. I just wasn't as active in 2022. But then in 2024, I was like, my tagline is, if not now, then when? You know, what am I waiting to do? And I had to reflect on all the skillsets he had given me, all the doors that I helped to open. And I walked away out of being a Commissioner with over 900 contacts. And I was like, well, what do I do with this? So one of the fields that I'm really interested in is economic development. I'm certified in community planning and in economic development. And when I think of parts of Gwinnett County, and I'm just gonna use, for example, the Centerville area. I look at that area and I think of, there's so much hope. But when you look and you can see just a Dollar General or something like that, then you know that that area is possible, possible for that area to have more growth. Not too much density, meaning a lot of people, but there's more growth that can happen because it becomes like a grocery store desert. It becomes all these different types of deserts that we really don't want for our communities.
So I live in Centerville. And yeah, I live in Centerville. I'm just, I am like half a mile from the promised land. Yeah, so I live down here. And I can tell you that, like, the businesses that are coming in, they're not great job creators. They are the Dollar Generals, the family doll, and we can support larger and better industry in this area. We really could. I mean, we've got the bodies, we've got, you know, we've got people and we can support. And I believe we have an economic base that also can support economic development in this area. That's something other than a wing place.
A gas station.
A station, because that seems to be what we get in fast food. That seems to be what we get. So I welcome to have conversations about Centerville and economic development down here because we need some. Oh, and the other thing too that we seem to be getting are these storage facilities.
And you can do so much more than storage. So work with your local county government officials and they can help lead the effort on that. One of the things I will say is that when you think about development, economic development, then we have to think that the businesses will come in, the manufacturing and other businesses will come in, but only if they have rooftops. Meaning that they want to see houses built, townhouses built, duplexes built, something to make the area viable. And if you don't necessarily have density, then it's hard for businesses to come in. And then you also gotta think about when the businesses come in, it impacts transit. And so that's the change into that the residents can have the opportunity to be able to get to work or to shop. So, yeah.
Yeah, and one of the problems with that, with larger industries coming in, is that there are not a lot of feeder roads in this area. So the arterial roads get clogged up very quickly, you know, in the mornings and in the afternoon because we're going all, you know, we're out here in the suburbs and we're going to subdivisions. And there's only so many main roads and everybody's on these roads. So that is the issue too.
Right, and you know, it's interesting that you say that Karen, because a lot of times, transportation is not built or roads may not be built because you don't have the population. And then once you have the population, it's like, it's too late. Why didn't they think about this 10 years ago? But it's not that they didn't think about it. What if they spend 100, they being Department of Transportation, who's doing the roads? They spend, say if they spend $40 million on roads and there's no people. Then the conversation would be, you wasted $40 million. We could have put it in the schools or we could have put it somewhere else. So it's like the chicken and the egg at times, but it's also about smart growth. What can you do to bring the people in, to bring the jobs? And actually, as a community, taking a stance and says, we want more jobs in this area. And we want jobs with livable wage.
Well-paid jobs that are sustainable jobs.
Absolutely. And so that's something that the community can ask for. And really, if you know of anything, a development coming to your area, then you can always, you know, go out and have those community meetings. I don't know if either one of you realize this, but in 2019 was when I started, January 1st, 2019, out by the Mall of Georgia is this development called the Exchange at Gwinnett. That was my first economic development project. And there was nothing out there but trees and rocks. And that's where Top Coffee is. And where it started, Sprouts. And you look at that area, how much it has grown. That wasn't me by myself. It was of course the Commissioner Board at that time and the developers and going back. But it was really the community involvement too, because, you know, there's a lot of young people in Gwinnett County and the average age maybe around 36. Well, they want some entertainment. And so we had to work with the Mall of Georgia to assure them that there wouldn't be any retail out there because the Mall of Georgia was feeling like, hey, you're building this big, you know, exchange, it's gonna take away from me. But if you notice, that spot is more of entertainment. There's even a place called Pickle Social that does pickleball, 34 pickleball courts. So I'm just saying that because before, that area was considered blighted. Believe it or not, it was a lot of hard rock.
So I'm glad you're talking about economic development because with the chambers and so forth, and you realize how much, and we've had guests on this show who talk about the lack of women having, being in the millions, earning income, being business owners, and some not even being six-figure business owners. And it being women business owners and not in that income bracket. What do you see Gwinnett being able to do to help change that number and making sure women-owned businesses are increasingly getting that income bracket? Because if we're not making 100,000 plus to the millions and being business owners, that's a problem. And we had a guest on our show that said less than, what was it Karen, like 3, 1% to 3% of women who own businesses? Yeah, that the businesses make more than $1 million. It was a very low percentage.
Yeah.
It's a really, first of all, Gwinnett County has a lot of resources, Gwinnett itself. Whether working with the Chamber, working with the Gwinnett Entrepreneur's Center, working with the Small Business Development Center at Gwinnett that's sponsored by the University of Georgia. There's so many different resources, but who are bringing all the resources together? And who's telling women? I'm learning more and more as I advance in this economic development space. I don't see many minority women, women or minorities, that's really in this economic development space because it's huge, you know? And so, one of the things, when you mentioned that particular income, last week at the Women in Business Reception, Gwinnett County, with Chantel Wilson's department, they had this big sign up and it was basically a poster board, but it had stats on it regarding women. And two of the stats I remember was that in Gwinnett County, it's only 4,700 women, women-owned businesses. Now, I know that they employ 30,000, but there are women who employ 30,000 people as a whole. So it's not a huge number, even with the dollar amount that you gave. So I step back a little further in the question and say, how do we get more women to become more active? And to look at and think about entrepreneurship, because every large business was once a small business. And 98% of businesses in Gwinnett came out of a small business at some point, unless it came in as a franchise from another state or something like that. So there's many different opportunities, but one of the things I would like to, I would like to see is that I actually served on the ATL Board, the Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority Board. And there's millions of dollars that's coming into the state of Georgia that deals with roads and asphalt and building bridges. There's not a lot of minority companies, not a lot of women owned or anything like that. So I think, and I'll always talk about electrification. I think people have to look at what is hot now that would be great today and in the future. And I think we miss that sometimes because we're not thinking broad enough. And I think if people, especially when we would come up with more businesses, there's a women-owned business in Cobb County where they deal with autonomous vehicles that take people back and forth from the choice baseball game. Those are the innovative type programs that we need to think about and not just think about service products, service goods, services and goods. Because it's okay to, it's okay to have services and to have staff in and to do other projects and programs and jobs that women own, but it's also great to come out of the box and say, what is needed now? And there's a lot that's needed with, when we think about EVs and charging stations, autonomous boat mobiles and everything like that. And I think we need to, you know, shift a little bit in what we can do and not think of just things that maybe say, it's good to have makeup, it's good to have perfumes, it's good to have, you know, all kinds of services like that. But if we want to, if they really want that dollar amount to make the dollar amount that they're after, then.
Go someplace where there's fewer. And I know sustainability, that green, creating less carbon imprint on the planet is huge. And I think that if we can get so many more, our young people in that industry as well, that we can definitely make a two-fold, right? Protecting our planet and empowering our community economically. I love that. I also wanted to ask you, everybody's Commissioner. I also wanted to ask you, you know, what, how do you like, what do you, what do you like about Gwinnett? The path it's going on now, its trajectory now? What are some things that you like, that you like seeing right now? And what are some things you would like to see implemented for us Gwinnetians?
I like so much. I really love what's going on now. And the last, really since 2018, 2019, there's a lot of things that even when I was in office, we helped to vote on, but it hadn't come to manifestation yet. For example, today, we actually had a ribbon cutting for the Sensory Tree Project that was voted on two years ago. And it might be, when we think about sustainability or we think about the environment, our Chairwoman Nicole Love Hendrickson is doing a fantastic job in moving the county forward on things that I helped along with other people who were ever in the office in 2020 when they came in the office. And then things they are doing now that has nothing to do with me at all. For example, soon there should be a Chief Equity Officer. Well, that was something we talked about years ago. Because as you think about diversity, inclusion and equity, you hear in the public in Florida and other states that some people are getting rid of that, you know, going away. Well, Gwinnett is one of those innovative counties where it's not going away. And when, at the State of the County address this year, she talked about creating opportunities. That lined up personally, one of my personal mantras that says, all any one of us need is an opportunity. And so as we continue to create opportunities to live, affordable housing, of course, when we talked about transit, when we think about now, the languages, you know, the county looked at the five languages and stuff like that, that we would see because of our diverse population. Those things are now being put in place and then some. Earlier, in order to have businesses, especially, especially black businesses, to win contracts in Gwinnett County, we had, we didn't have any data. And now she's leading the effort with the disparity study. Because for the other counties, they were like, oh, we may decide to just go ahead and create the disparity package. But you really can't do that, or you shouldn't do that, if you don't have data. Data to prove what we may or may not already know. And so we know that.
Targeted and curated to fix whatever problem, you have to identify the problem and then create a solution of how you're going to fix that problem.
And then one of the things, it's not that I have any regrets for not being in office, but I wanted to come back again and make things sustainable. So what they're doing now with the disparity study, it just, you know, they just found a contractor to, to actually lead that efforts in there. But once they give the data, and no matter what's going on, but to make things sustainable so that, you know, two years from now, it's not there, or someone just decides to, let me just, no, we don't want that any longer and just put it away. No, some things need to stay in the community. You know, we want great water all the time. So we made sure that there's policies in place and partnerships in place that Gwinnett County will always lead in the efforts of clean water. So those are the type of things that I would, you know, I look all over the county, you know, one of the things because of the, during the Black Lives Matter protests and things, one of the things that when I talked to the young people, they wanted was better relationships with our police. Well, one of the things that are in place was, is the Citizens Police Advisory Board. Can it get stronger and stronger each year? Of course it can. But it's there and you could build upon it.
I'm on that board this year, hey!
Ask those tough questions. And you know, one of the things I encourage you, not to just sit, not just to sit and listen, but really push for actionable steps. Actionable. That's the part. Because you go through all this and you go, but what's the action?
But what are we doing? What are we doing? Or what impact are we making?
Exactly. And so you had your first year or your second year of the board being there. And of course, you have to learn the first year and get the foundation. Okay, now let's move. You know, at some point, you gotta, you have to have actionable steps, I believe.
Yep, I agree with you. So serving on the Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority Board, what are some of the trends that we should be anticipating in the metro Atlanta area, particularly in Gwinnett when it comes to transit?
Oh my goodness, one of the things that that particular board will do is that we represent 13 counties, from Cherokee down to Kaweta. And so any major, yes, and so any, any major decisions that are being made regarding transit, whether it's a bus rapid transit or anything like that, then it comes to the board or a referendum. It comes to our board and we vote on it and then it's done in that particular county. So with Gwinnett County, one of the things that we hope come to fruition is that the Board of Commissioners voted that they would like to have a referendum in November where there is a one cent tax done for transit. And then we approve that. So now it goes back to the Board of Commissioners to decide when they want to put that on the, on the actual ballot. So what comes with that? If you had the opportunity to participate in the comprehensive transportation plan? And you have a lot of input, but what I'm most excited about, one of the things I'm most excited about is there's two routes, Routes 90 and 91, where every day there will be buses going to the airport. And that ends up kind of the country all the time, but I will feel better about traveling and parking. You know, and so it may end up being, the place hasn't been designated, I don't think clearly, but I'm just gonna use the example, maybe it's parking at the Mall of Georgia or something like that. And so it's available every day into like at least 11 or 12 at night because there's not a lot of flights after 12:00 PM anyway.
Unless you're flying out of the country.
Right. And so you have to think about that. But that gives, also gives an opportunity for our residents to get jobs at the airport. Yes, they can use MARTA now, but people would feel better, I think, too, being in that little closer environment and just taking the bus. If the buses only have two stops, we don't want a bus that stops everywhere. And we'd have to start, stop at least in the north and then maybe one time again, probably around Jimmy Carter. But not going to stop everywhere, just two stops on your way back and forth.
Maybe going down 85 and then into, jumping on, you know, down to the airport. That would, that, that would be great.
Yeah, and then the other thing is microtransit. As you know, at microtransit, we tried and, well, we not only tried, it was very successful in Snellville back when I was in office. And now it was recently approved this week, I believe, or the last week, in Norcross, where the city of Norcross will actually have a microtransit. And they had a partnership with the county and the city and the Atlanta Region Commission to pay for a portion of that. So when we think about transit, I'm always looking, when new development goes up, will they be impacted by transit or not? And if so, you know, you can't have those large buses everywhere. If you have them on the major thoroughfares, that's very helpful. And so one of the buses that, or several buses that we will be purchasing in the future are called Bus Rapid Transit, BRTs. They are cheaper than heavy rail, but they're fast as a light rail and they're much cheaper.
That is good. And I, I love having public transportation. I'm big on public, I'm from up north.
Like as a real option, right?
Correct. Yeah, because again, I'm all about protecting the planet. And we have way too many cars on the road and we're all going in the same direction. And if we can make that adjustment for the Olympics, because when the Olympics was here, there was absolutely no traffic. And I don't see why we can't make those arrangements together again, to make sure that we make sure, and people still went to work, people still did everything they needed to do, but we just didn't have nearly as many vehicles on the road. So I think that we should be able to do that because Planet Earth needs us to take better care of it. You know, we stink at it right now. We gotta do a better job. You know, I, I do want to just mention something that I didn't know. You have a bench named after you or honor at the park? And I didn't know, yeah, I didn't know that.
I was surprised back in, oh my goodness, this is almost gonna be a year. Well, March or April last year, the Gwinnett Park Foundation wanted to acknowledge me and thank me for my service because I've always been a big supporter of our parks. Gwinnett County is some of the best parks. And so because of that, they, they named a bench after me. And I had three choices of which parks, and I really like Alexander Park because of the diversity of people that will go there. And so I love it. Quick note on that, there's a part near Discovery High School where there's no park today. Near this repart, Discovery High School, that's considered a park desert. But in 2018, before I came in office, five students from Discovery Park came to Board of Commissioners and demanded a park. And so when I came in office, I started running with their requests. And it's not until, I think it's next month or maybe the month after, but we're finally gonna break ground on a park that's gonna be Monfort and Old Norcross.
Nice.
So it's those types of things. And I remember there's an older Chairperson that told me, many, when I first came in the office, he said, Commissioner, at the time, know that whatever decisions you make, you may not see the manifestation of those for 20 to 40 years.
Yep.
So, you know, that's true with that, with this particular park. I led the efforts, of course, with the Hooper Renberg Project that we have. That's not done yet. Perfectly done by 2025. But these are the type of things where I feel like I'm still invested in the community based on decisions that I made in 2021, 22. Yeah, so I thank God for the opportunity.
Amen. Are you gonna have the young people there when you guys break ground? Is that possible? We can highlight those young folks that came and so brave and spoke up?
Well, I don't know if it's the exact young people because they may be away to college or they may have graduated by now. But we will have representation from, from Discovery High School. And the thing about that park that I want to put out there early, it may not be as large as some of the other parks because you have to look at what's buildable land. And there's train track back there and there's water back there. So some of it, anytime you have a train track, an active train track. So if you're gonna stop, you know, there's gonna be, of course, we would be in front of the train tracks, I believe, but it limits your land use, but it's still gonna be a park.
Yeah, it's a space where young people and families can go out and have some green space. And, you know, picnic in the park, play, run, swing, do those things, walk. Hello, just, and, and look, be a community, right? We're better together and these are spaces where we can do that and be one with nature. And that's why I would love for future kids, because it's all about your voice. Like one thing that I hear from you, everyone's Commissioner, that people need to stand up and speak out. And it doesn't matter what age you are. So like you said, if someone misses to you, you may not be in office when your missions or your objectives are, come to fruition. The same thing with these young people who spoke up about it. While they may be on in the future, even just having their names presented and share the same story. So our other kids, because you know, with Karen and Kat, we all think you. And we want to empower them to have their voice with their schools, with what's going on. I don't care if it's from what they get at lunch, to what they have on their curriculum, the whole nine. They should have a voice and we should support that. And this is a good example of what happens when y'all stand up and speak out to me.
Absolutely, absolutely right. Because, and I support young people. That's why a lot of things that I may do with different nonprofits, I think about young people. My own brief story is that I grew up in the foster care system in New York. My mom died when I was two, but I'm the seventh out of eight children. When my dad died, when I was 12, my grandmother asked for me to come live in North Carolina. And so whatever I can do to help foster children, I had, I did not have any bad experiences like some people may have had. And even my own siblings, they had different experiences than I because three of us was placed in one foster home and three was in another, and then my baby sister was by herself. And so, but if I can help in any way, then that's what I want to do because the children have never asked to be in those traumatic situations.
That's right.
We can help even, just encourage them that they can do better. They, you know, it's, we can all do good, but we can also do better. We can take the time to listen and to inspire and not always have the answers, but just to listen. I'm actually starting to get into crypto coins a lot, Bitcoins. And when I talk to young people or I listen to young people, they have so much farther advanced than I could be ever in all this new terminology and this, that and. And when I say get into it, I want to understand where it's going because it's not going away. And so with it, what does that mean for a young person who can, who can get their salaries when they pay their points? Can you just imagine? I mean, you can, you, you, you know. That had requested that at one point, but I was signing up for something today and they were like, is this in crypto? Is this, you know, is it, are you using?
Oh, wow.
It didn't have anything to do with that. It was just that it was an option on a form. And you know what? I was signing up to work with a nonprofit. And they were asking how I would like to give donations in the future. And the option is, will I be given, using cryptocurrency?
Well, okay. So I was like, I don't have any crypto.
But you have to, you know, it's one of those things to, even if you never decide, and I'm not encouraging people to get in or not to get in. I'm just saying, learn about it.
Yeah, learn, learn. That's the people that like, because the young people, they're the, they're the, they're the next generation. So we need to be listening and learning from them. Not always, you know, there's times to give advice and there's times to pass on wisdom. There's also time that we can learn from them as well. And I love that you're open to that.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. It's all about critical thinking too. Oh, absolutely, absolutely. It's all about critical thinking too. Skills that they can learn going through, they can apply in high school, middle school. It's not too early. And when I think about Gwinnett County, and I know this call is not about education, but when I think about Gwinnett County. Our high school, secondary, was the only high school in the country. That when it opened last year, that it specializes in artificial intelligence. So they have it in high school and then this year it's the focus is middle school. So in two more years, the focus will be in kindergarten. So that means that by twenty, um, twenty seven, twenty twenty-eight, all the way up, a cluster. You know, elementary to high school.
That's beautiful. That's good to know, girl. There's conversations about any and everything. We, we gonna talk about it all. We trying. Shallow cluster. How can we get that in the shop? And South and everybody else.
You know, but that's something to really ask, you know, well, how can we get that? Because the thing that I do love about Gwinnett County in the education system is that there's a lot of different themes. A lot of different schools you can go to, whether it's Paul Duke or whether it's Lanier, if you like nursing. There's a lot of schools of, of, uh, that have different choices that's available. But we have to make sure that we're visible, we have to show up, we have to research, and you can't do it when your child needs it. You have to do it a year or two before.
That's right.
You, you know, they're going in their first grade and there's a school that, that may specialize in Spanish. Well, I can't wait to that year to enroll them to figure out which school or where I go with, just with my neighborhood school. You have to do that research.
I was talking on a panel, um, a couple of months ago about preparing your, your student for college. And, you know, and there were some folks who were there from different state agents, it's different, different, uh, like Student Finance Authority and things like that. And I said, you know, this, all of this is great advice, but you really, if you wait until high school to be preparing your student. For college, then you have really missed the ball because it needs to start, that planning of their educational sequence. Needs to start when they get to sixth grade. In sixth grade, you need to be ensuring that they're taking the right maths so that will count for high school credit. So that when they get to high school, that they can have those, you know, those higher maths that they need. And, and even the sciences, they can start taking high school level, um, math and sciences in middle school. And unless someone tells you that, you don't know it. Cause that's not information that's readily available. And a lot of parents don't know that. So I'm telling people every time I can. If you got kids going from elementary to middle school, sit with a guidance counselor, ensure that they have. That they're gonna be able in seventh and eighth grade to get those classes that are gonna count for college, for high school credit.
And not only that, on that note, and, um, even in between the summer, in between them graduating from eighth grade. And going to ninth, summer schools.
That's right.
What happens when you pay to go to summer school? You start off with a GPA. Hello? So on day one, and hopefully you take a health class or something like that. And you might say, oh, this cost me three hundred dollars. Your child will start off with four point oh. Easier for, as we know, if you've been to college and things like that, it's harder for your GPA to drop that quickly. If you started out with it, you know, so it's little things like that that you just learn through trial and error, but.
Yeah. And from other, and from other parents passing that, that knowledge along. It's funny, you said that I went to summer school when I was, um, at home. So, and I went, I actually went to summer school every, every summer. So I, um, took classes in advance. So then that way it'll help me move further along. Unlike now, they have dual programs where you graduate from high school and get your associate. So that's totally awesome. But when I was in school, they didn't have that. That was where I moved forward. But before I let you go, um, cause I, 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 I'd always ask this question. We always want to know. Mental health is number one on our plate. We try to make sure that we, um, break the stigma and talk about it. So you are an extraordinary woman. You've done extraordinary things. How do you manage your mental health?
I, right now, it's been easier because I have more time. I think you have to take that time out, but I also know, um, I served two years on a viewpoint health board. I made sure that we had, um, especially May, cause you know, May is looked at as mental health awareness. But I made sure that we had programs available to the public. But one of the things on that note, and it's not like I'm deflecting the question, but I remember reading Proverbs thirty-one in the Bible. And I remember asking a mentor, well, when did she take a bubble bath? But it talks about all the great things that she did. She got up before everyone else and she bought the fine lemon and then she did this and that. But it never said, when did she take time for herself? So I tend to, when, when I have enough is enough, where I step back really and I choose not to accept negative energy. That helps my mental health because it's a choice to, it, it's a choice whether you get angry at someone. They can make you angry. You get it. You could be disappointed, but it's up to you. And what I really learned, and this is not arrogant. But what I really learned is I try to give the message that God is telling me. It's not up to me to be the receiver of the message that I'm giving.
That's right. That's right. That's not arrogant. That's facts.
You know, so what I have to do is to be able to share what I'm supposed to share. When I make mistakes, I own those mistakes. And just say, I apologize. So I, I don't have any regrets. You know, if I hurt your feelings, I may not have known I hurt your feelings. But it was never intentional, but if you tell me, I will apologize. So the mental health comes from the freedom to apologize. The freedom to say, um, you know, not, uh, not only that I'm sorry, I look at myself and I say, how can I do better? You know, and sometimes we have to forgive ourselves. We blew it. We blew it with the conversation. We blew it with the relationship. We know what we wasn't supposed to do and we have to apologize to ourselves and own our own mistakes. That's how I handle mental health, not perfect. And I know that there's a lot of resources out there. I have a lot of friends and, and just people that if I really wanted to talk to, I would talk to, you know, and just release it. But some of it is doing self-reflection. What can I do better? Oops, I missed that one. Hey, let me call Suzie and say, Suzie, I blew it. I'm so sorry. Suzie still may be mad with me. She might have told a hundred people. Those, that's not my problem. My problem is I released it to you and what you do with it is now up to you.
That, that's good. Thank you for that. That was a word. I know, right? A word. But you know, and, and, and I received that because that Proverbs thirty-one, she's pouring into a lot of people. And, and, and when I read that too, I've, I've thought, who's pouring into her? They give all these, all these, uh, the, that passage gives these attributes of what's considered a virtuous woman. But who's pouring into her? She's doing all of these things for, for her family and for the love, you know, because she loves her family. But who's pouring into her? And, and that's something as women, we have to be very careful. That we're not just always giving, that we're receiving as well. You know, and that we're, and that we're serving from, um, we're serving from our cup and not from our sauce. You know, we're serving from our sauce, but not from our cup. We need to be serving from the overflow and making sure that we're not empty. You know, cause so often we as women, we give, we give, we give. And we don't receive in return what we're giving. We're, we're pouring into other people, we're doing for other people, we're there for them, but then when it's our time to just. Sit and be still, there's nobody else who's doing the work. And so the work just sits. Yeah. And that's why we like to have this miss mental wellness moment because to me, that helps people feel their love cup. Because now we're giving people ideas that they may not know how to sit still, like Karen said, or like you said, Marlena, just focus. So this is why to me, this segment is so important, just that one question, because we can empower somebody else. And that's what this show is all about. We're very intentional on making sure that we leave some nuggets for people to make their corner of the world better. And that's truly how we feel. It's not a tagline or anything. This is truly the work that God has put on us. And we're trying to do the very best that we can and make sure that we uplift the only two places we have to live. Our mind, our body and spirit and this planet. So I want to say thank you so much, everyone's commissioner. For joining us. And look, I want everybody to know, we've been trying to get this busy lady, so I'm so happy.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for being patient because it's the right time. And I always feel that when we use the time that God has orchestrated. Everything will work out the way that it should.
Absolutely, absolutely. Everything has to drive purpose and order. And I do believe that. And on that note, I'm going to say thank you for joining us on this episode of Conversations with Karen and Kat. Well, we are impacting the world one conversation at a time.